We move into our public hearing. A public hearing gives anyone an opportunity to speak for or against ordinances. And tonight we have ordinance 988, which is in ordinance amending ordinance 506, known as the zoning ordinance of Winchester, Tennessee to rezone Cherokee State subdivision to R2S medium-density, single-family residential district from the current zoning of R1 low-density residential district. Is there anyone here this evening to speak for or against ordinance 988?
Come on in.
Yes, come forward and state your name and address.
I'm Josh Arnold. My address is 111 Colonial Drive, and I own the lot right next to it. My only question is, if you rezone it, does the restrictions when they started the subdivision still play? Like, say, would be brick and stone, 1,500 square feet and all that?
Yes, that part will change. That's correct.
That is a private neighborhood or homeowners developers association agreement. The city does not get into the enforcement of restricted covenants. Basically, all we have is zoning, which says what type of building you can have on there, what the minimum lot size is, what building setback lines will be. But in answer to your question, that is a homeowners' association, if there is one in place or not, the primary residents and developer of the subdivision. That is a matter to be handled by the neighborhood. The city doesn't enforce.
Okay, well, every one of those lots that was sold was sold with those restrictions on it.
And again, that's a neighborhood that's a homeowners' association tied to. If someone were to come in and start a dwelling, say, put a metal building up, for instance, the city could not do anything about that. It would be up to the homeowners to group together and to go and tell that person, hey, you're in violation of our covenant. You need to adjust, or we're going to take you to court. And that's your process there.
But basically, the ordinance does not impact...
What was in play?
What was in place at all, one way or the other, either negatively or positively. Anything that would impact that would be a matter of your homeowners' association impacting that. But this does not impact that at all.
This is going to limit you to, it's going to be single-family dwelling only. It can be no duplexes, no apartment buildings. The only difference is the minimum lot size is smaller, and the setbacks are, there's some latency in the setbacks instead of a 35-foot front setback. You have a 30, instead of a 15-foot side setback, you have to...
Like I said, I'm just curious whether, you know, it's going to open it up for anything, or if those would still be in play.
Miller, you want to come forward and identify yourself?
The only reason to request this zoning change is to change the setback lines. The restricted covenants were not changed at all. The building size, the brickings here, everything's in place. All we're wanting, all I have requested is to zone it to R2S, which will allow like 10 feet closer to the property line. It changes the front setback, and that's all we're trying to do. There is no changes in the restricted codes or the guidelines for the houses to be built done whatsoever. All we're asking is for the setback to be changed. It's R2S, not R2. No duplexes will be allowed. That's all we're trying to do.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else speak for or against ordinance 988? Anyone? Did you get your conservative answers?
Yeah, basically, decided it's still in play.
Okay, good. Thank you for coming. Okay, there being no other comments in regard to ordinance 988 speaking for or against, we will now consider the public hearing closed at this time. We'll move into the dress's presentations and our requests, and that'll be a quarter of reports. Zachary?
Good afternoon, everybody. I looked it up. Tomorrow will be six years that I appeared before you for the first time here. Lots happened since then. I've met a girl and bought a house and got married, and things have certainly changed for me in the last six years.
Are we, did we have something to do with that?
No. Even though I was tricked, I didn't know I was on TV the first time I came in here.
I remember asking you about...
I remember that very clearly.
Well, it worked anyway.
Yeah. Anyhow, much like I said, we did wrap up our fiscal year July, or I'm sorry, June 30th, and I'm going to bounce around just a little bit in my quarterly report. But we wrapped our fourth quarter up down 5,000 gallons for fuel sales for the fourth quarter. However, we're still the third highest selling fiscal year in a gallon since, so that's still pretty good. Still strong sign that things are looking up economy-wise for us. We ended the fiscal year with 40 base aircraft. That was up four from last year, and we're still awaiting one relocation into our new T-hangers. As of July 6th, our hangar waiting list stands at 35 aircraft. So if I could somewhere down the road build another set of hangers, I could immediately fill that, and that would be great. The budget for FY '15 has been the most off it's been in the six years that I've been here. Pretty much the last five years, it's been fairly spot-on within a percent or so each direction. But due to a couple of unanticipated expenses this year, we ended the fiscal year on June 30th being about 4.3% above our expenses. It still had about $8,600 worth of bills outstanding, so that is what it is. We're moving forward with that. We hoped that we calculated better for this coming fiscal year, and as we all know, the budgetary process this year was very challenging, but we do feel that we were able to make cuts in line with the money that we received this year, and we'll be able to make that work. We did still decide, the airport authority did still decide to move forward with the capital improvement project we had on the books for this year. We will dip into our reserves to do that, but we're doing that because we know that in order to ever expand further in the future, that this project will have to be done. And if we wait to do it, that more than likely it'll cost two to three times as much to do in the future, since the state's going to be picking up a large chunk of the project in total. We have fully executed the lease with the Experimental Aircraft Association, Chapter 699. We have made a copy of that available to the city for your records. The current lease, the Phase 1 lease that we have with Medtrams right now, we're 10 months into that 24-month lease. The Phase 1 lease, just as a reminder, allows them to operate on a temporary basis at the airport, as well as do engineering and geotechnical work for their permanent facility. We do hope to address Phase 2 in the near future. I have, as of yet, been unsuccessful in getting hold of Scott Carroll to do that, but I know when they're ready to do it, they'll be here and don't want to have it done yesterday, and that's okay. We'll be ready to go with that. We did complete the transaction of a sale of a .9 acre piece of property south of Cowan Highway by the airport within our runway protection zone. As part of that sale, we did also acquire a mobile home with that. We put that up for sale, or rather, the city, if you guys were good enough, put that up for sale for us on GoDeals.com. Sale was complete. Money has been transferred, and we're just now waiting for the mobile home to be picked up. As of yet, that has not happened, but I anticipate that to happen within probably the next week. Last thing, the capital improvement project that I did allude to, and I have talked about this before here, it is the relocation of our automated weather system at the airport. We prepped a site for it as part of another project, and by prepping, I mean, we put the dirt in place. We've really not done anything else, but what we will still have to do in order to have that relocated is do a limited amount of concrete work, fencing, and have some utilities relocated to the amount of about 100 feet out there, so it's not going to be a great amount. But once that is done, the state's picking up the rest of the tab. They're going to come in and install brand-new equipment, and everything gets online. It'll be better than what we have. It'll actually, I believe, have some weather sensors attached to it, so I'll know if it's raining, or I'll know if it's thunderstorming outside without actually opening the window. Other than that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
All right. Any questions from council? Zachary?
Councilman Walmak will be happy to know. I'm in the middle of a major home remodel, and with the exception of my tile, everything else has been sourced locally.
Well, congratulations on six years.
Thank you.
Took you a while to do it, though, didn't it?
Okay, thank you, Zach. Quarter report from Winchester Utilities, Mr. Callwood.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Miss, may I? I think you have the report there in front of you. I'm not going to read it to you, because you're all pretty capable of understanding what's going on within the utility. We're, like the city and the airport, just closed out 2016, and we're still in the process of closing the books. It was a very good year. There was lots of infrastructure upgrades that were made, some of those that were completed in the last quarter up there. You can see that, I guess if we totaled that up, about $1 million was spent in the fourth quarter across all three systems, all the way from upgrading the sewer in Sharp Springs to the district substation, to increase capacities, to doing some upgrades on the water plant for pure water. So we continue to work off of the five-year capital plan, revise it as emergencies arise, but all in all, let's continue to move on and do well. As far as financials, year-to-date, we finished, or we're anticipating we're going to finish plan, about $50,000 less than what we had planned to, although that's because our revenues for the year is down almost $600,000. So if you put those two together, we've made up in expense the difference between what we're going to miss by a half-million dollars. It's a lot of hard work went into to make that happen. That revenue loss was due to the closure of the Clarice Lining out in the industrial park and shop as they started draining down. Both of those had major impacts on us. The 2017 plan is in place. There are no water or sewer increases. TPA, we're still waiting on them. As far as what electric will do, my guess is it's going to be somewhere around a percent and a half, and then we will have a slight little less than a percent increase in term to make up for some of the lost revenue. All three systems are financially sound. We started the year with monies in the bank just about before we started, or started, finished before we started, and spent roughly $3.5 billion in capital, all funded out of the general fund. Productivity projects, if you look down through those, all three systems have major improvements. As they continue to, we track those metrics month-to-month, and everybody within the utility can look at a series of charts and know exactly how we're performing. It's that time of the year again to start audits. By the time we meet again, I will probably be through with part of them, and hopefully that those will go as well as they did in 2016. All of our evaluation for the year are complete on a merit-based, and we're in the process of developing 2017 individual objectives. And we've finished the session planning for every employee, and those training plans for those folks, what they're requesting and what the supervisors think they need, are in place, and we're starting to work on those. As far as what's coming up in the 2017 capital plan, you can see down at the bottom, in the next quarter, we're planning to spend about $800,000. All of that may not flow. Part of those projects will just get started, and they won't complete until later on in the end of the year. So all in all, I think you can be proud of your utility and the performance of what's going on there, and just keep on tracking. And like Zach, I just passed six years also. We must study that same time, Zach.
You didn't find a girlfriend?
I didn't find a girlfriend. I have moved a couple of times.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions from Mr. Callwood and council? Thank you, Rob. We'll move into unfinished business. Item A is approval of minutes of the June 28, 2016 special call meeting. May the will of council move to approve? Motion to approve by Councilman Snead.
Second.
Second by Councilman Spencer. Discussion. All those in favor, aye? Opposed, no? Minutes stand approved. Item B is third and final reading of ordinance 988 and ordinance amending ordinance 506, known as the zoning ordinance of Winchester, Tennessee to rezone Cherokee State subdivision to R2S medium-density, single-family residential district from the current zoning of R1 low-density residential district. May the will of council move to approve? Motion to approve by Councilman Walmak.
Second.
Second by Councilman Snead. Discussion. It's a roll call.
Councilman Snead?
Aye.
Councilwoman Alexander?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bates?
Aye.
Councilman Smith, second.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving into new business, appointment of Winchester Utility System member. This is a mayoral appointment, and I would like to reappoint Danny Smith to another term on the utility board, and would ask the council for the vote of approval on that.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Snead.
Second.
Second by Councilman Spencer. Discussion. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Thank you all. Danny does a great job. Served on several committees with him, and he's very thorough in things, comments that he has, because he's just great job. Item B is gateway scenic overlook bids. Ms. Rowan?
Yes, in your packet, you, we had the bid opening last week. We had three people to turn in bids. We had Pearl Construction and Excavation, $299,547. Adams Contracting LLC, $195.68. And Robertson Vaughn Construction, $206,338.59. Out of those three, the low bid would be Adams Contracting LLC out of Lexington, Kentucky. And before today, my recommendation was going to be to not accept the low bid because it is forty, a little bit over $45,000 over the grant amount. The grant was going to be matched by the downtown group and not by the City of Winchester, so there was not going to be any funds out of our general fund. But we did run into some other issues about 3:00 this afternoon. I asked Ms. Stewart to come and try to explain. There may be some other monies available.
I have late information on your desk there. There will be a letter from TDOT, and then there is another letter. I'm going to briefly tell you what service transportation funds are, but I've given this to you so you can take it home, look it up, read it, know what I'm saying is what it is. Service transportation funds is federal highway money that is dispensed down through the state of Tennessee. And the state will keep a portion of it, and then there is a portion that is allocated and is by your population, and is for cities, I believe, 5,000 and not more than 200,000. And that's how we get the money. And we receive an allocation every September. There is, we don't get a check. The state of Tennessee does not get a check. It's just city and the federal government, and we have to obligate the funds before the state gets it or before the city gets it. So we received a letter from TDOT. The way the service transportation funds have been handled has changed this year. Also, on the back of, where I'm defining that, you'll see I've underlined on your first one, and then I've updated you with a way that it changed in February 1st of What it is, we, I call it like a bank of money, and we have it sitting there until we fill out a project initiation form, which is basically about 60 pages of information. And we choose a project that we want to do in our community. Our drainage project was the last project that we administered. Before that, we can also request the state to administer our STP funds, and the overlay of asphalt on the bypass for its latest asphalt dead that was administered by the state of Tennessee. And I tell you this because, and please, if you have any questions, because it's very confusing, so I welcome, and I'll do my best to explain. This year, we have, in our letter, and we have to wait till we get our letter, our funds, as best can occur, we never really know where we're at in our funds until we get in and writing from them. We have FY 2015, $103,734, and we have to have it obligated by September 30, 2016. And this is important. We see the whole scope of it. Our total current balance is $694,291. And how did we get to that balance? Because when we did the resurface project on the bypass, they obligated nearly $600,000 for that project. When it actually went to construction, it was under $300,000. So we had to wait for all that, and then it rolled back into our balance. But remember, this money's still at the federal government. It's not even at the state of Tennessee. And now they're talking about by 2020, we will have $481,524 in fiscal year 2016. This will be the money that will be allocated to us at the end of September 2016, is $109,033. So when I got the letter, I called the state, and I said, you know, we sent our project initiation to TDOT last November. It was downloaded on the server I checked today on December 15th, so we can't do anything until we receive a contract from TDOT. We had requested the overlay of Bible Crossing. So that, why do we have this $103,000? Because in anticipation, we were going to be using that on the resurfacing project of Bible Crossing Road. We are scheduled, they have promised me to have a contract by the end of the week. I'm hoping for August 1st, to be quite frank with you. As you know, still, state government goes slowly sometimes. But this $103,000 was our concern, because if we do not have it obligated, now, it cannot be a project that we have not started. NEPA is the environmental document. It takes about six months for us to do that. Everybody wants to know why grants take so long. It's called NEPA, and it's our environmental document that we have to do before we'll get our contract, and then we'll get our notice to proceed with NEPA. So $8,000 of the $103,000 will be obligated for NEPA. We've already spoke with them today. MC was in on the phone call. Beth was on the phone call, and Christie has even said that Kip Matons, I was dealing with my region planner, and then it got to the point that I said, I want every dollar for Winchester. It's not my fault that I don't have the contract. You know, we sent it last fall. I want to make sure that Winchester gets every dime of this $103,734. So then his boss, Kip Maton, got involved to be creative to see how come we get our money. So I gave him several options. My first priority I asked for is First Avenue, the project that we're in construction now, because if I'm in construction, I know that I can obligate the money right away and get money. I said, can I have money for, I've already requested most of the money, but there's a little bit left at the end. Can I request to use STP funds for my city match for that? I do not, Christie says that Kip has called back and said, I can do that, but I don't want to say for sure, because I don't know what he's saying that I can do for sure. That was the first thing, because that would benefit the City of Winchester. The second thing I asked for, and it was already assumed that we were going to use the $8,000 for the NEPA. So really, it was $8,000 for the NEPA for Bible Crossing. The second was, can I use the city, pay the city match on the First Avenue project that I'm in construction? My third thing was, my roadscape came in over bid. Can I take those STP funds and use it towards the roadscape project to make it work? He has said so this afternoon, and I really think that's what Kip is saying, that we can use that. Why are they working so hard for us to find a way to ensure that we get all of our money? It's because if we don't use our money, the state of Tennessee does not get the money either. It's still at the federal government. It has not been obligated. So it is in their best interest to help us, help them, because they want to keep getting all their funds from this federal highway department. So I would recommend that we accept the bid contingent of using STP funds being approved for the remainder of the match. But we are working with TDOT. Our region planner is coming the first week in August. We've got Kip Maton, Wendy Sullivan is the director of local programs. Kip is right underneath her, so they're all looking at innovative ways to make it work so we don't lose any of our money.
And again, that's forty-some thousand dollars?
Be $45,000 and $68,000. So what I'm hoping to do, I have $103,734. They have agreed today that they're going to let me go back and request money for the design of the roadscape. That's money that we have paid in fiscal year 14 and 15 that we were not eligible for at the time. Sometimes grant projects, these are reversible, and then they're not reversible, and then they're reversible again. Am I right, Ed? It's, I'm telling you, that's why I'm saying it's clear as mud. And so they're going to let me reverse, it's right at $22,000 for that, and so I'm asking for the roadscape money. I'm asking for the $8,000 for Bible Crossing, and I'm asking for the rest of it for First Avenue, to make sure I get it off.
So I guess my question is, does that cover the $45,000?
Yes.
Okay.
And the $106,000 that is FY 2016, that will, it's only on paper, allocated to us in... And the hundred and six thousand, that is FY 2016, that will, it's only on paper, allocated to us in September 30th. They have agreed that we will roll that into the Bible Crossing project.
Do, well, you have engineering costs associated with these projects?
That's what they're willing to reimburse us.
Okay.
Yes.
They're reimbursing that.
At the time, when I first came here, Mayor, engineering was reimbursable on every project that we did. And then, as time went on, only certain projects were reimbursable. And then there were other projects that they were not reimbursable, and then two years down the road, they changed their mind, and then they weren't reimbursable. And I actually say that's why they keep the manual online instead of imprinting. It's much easier to go online and change it on me.
So basically, what they have agreed to as of this afternoon is to reimburse us the twenty-two thousand dollars for the design of the roadscape that we've already paid, so that will come back to us. The eight thousand dollars that we would have to pay for the environmental for Bible Crossing Road. So there's thirty thousand that's gonna come back into the pot. The forty-five thousand and sixty-eight dollars that she has requested will finish the roadscape grant. There'll be no expense to the city of Winchester. And the additional, however much that is, we are asking for any of the expenses on First Avenue.
And if we do not use it, we will not get it from the state or get it either at the state of federal funds.
So there's the potential for up to maybe seventy, fifty to seventy thousand dollars to go back in our pot that we're not expecting during the budget process. So that should help us.
So the recommendation would be to approve the low bid subject to...
Approval by T-DOT.
These funds being voted.
Service transportation funds. And it's based on your population, the allocation amount, how it varies. If you'll notice, 2015 is a hundred and three, and then sixteen is a hundred and nine. It's based on your population, plus how much money they give per person, per capita each year. So it varies each year. You don't know until it passes Congress what you're getting.
And no city under five thousand dollars qualifies, or five thousand people, excuse me.
It's five thousand to two hundred thousand. In the metropolitan, like the Nashville, Memphis, Knoxville, they get a direct line allocation from the federal government.
Okay. So council, you've heard the bids. We do have a low bid of one ninety-five zero sixty-eight, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, sixty-eight dollars. And then you've heard comments that Ms. Rogan and Vaughn have made in regard to these funds being allocated back to the city and used for these different projects to include the roadscape. So what would be the will of the council?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve, subject to...
Subject to the getting the funding.
Okay. Okay. All right. We've got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Bates.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Womack. Discussion. Okay. Be none? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you.
If you have any questions after your raise, you can always come by, Sydney.
Okay. Tina, you got that? Okay, Adam C. We have been meeting, city council meeting at five o'clock for the past several months. And we talked a little bit about this in our work session, and we didn't bring it up at a council meeting. It's true whether or not we want to continue to keep this, this time at five o'clock or go back to our six o'clock as it used to be. If I have any comments in regard to that. Jean, how is your schedule?
Five o'clock's working really well.
Five o'clock is not a problem.
I'm fine with me. I just question anybody that's worked until five, being able to come to a council meeting they want to attend. And it's once a month for us. It's not a major ordeal, I don't think. If they do meet at six.
Well, true. I appreciate the comment. However, if we need it six, we're gonna have one council member that's not gonna be able to be here regularly. So what would be the will of the council in regard to continuing on at five o'clock?
I think that's what we need to do here.
Okay. So is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's one motion.
Okay. Got a motion by Councilman Spencer, second by Councilwoman Alexander. Discussion. Do we have to do this in the form of ordinance or resolution or anything as far as changing it in our city?
We will have to, we will have to work on that.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. So we'll continue on at five o'clock moving forward. Item D is Resolution 864, Internal Control Policy. Mark Carroll.
I should have received in your pocket a copy of the resolution and the internal control manual. This manual is a new requirement by the state as they become ever more stringent on our segregation duties and are making sure that all of our transparent and our transactions have several eyes upon them. I will say that the implementation of this will not be able to take effect until Ms. G. Baker's position is filled. The policy or manual we have before you actually involves that position as we totally change the manner in which the flow of transactions occur. I'm really excited about it. I think it'll be a great thing. Things though do change so fast. Was looking at a notebook the other day that I got when I started, and then six years of full time, there was one sheet of paper that was still relevant in a four-inch notebook. So things change very quickly, and this is another part of those changes.
So have you been here six years now?
Been here six years.
Lots of that going on.
I've been here six years ago.
Good things come in threes. So your recommendation would be that we pass this resolution, but not act upon it or enforce it until we have Ms. Baker's position filled, so we can rattle to then. Council, what's the will of the council on Mark Carroll's recommendation of Resolution 864?
Mayor, I would move to approve.
Okay, I've got a motion to approve by Councilman Spencer.
Second that.
A second by Councilman Snee. Discussion. All those in favor of Resolution 864, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no. Resolution carries. Thank you, Mark Carroll. Mark in Clark, Nice, and Crenshaw Engagement Letter. Mark Carroll.
I also received in your pocket a copy of the engagement letter with Clark, Nice, and Crenshaw for the 2016 audit. That engagement letter acts as our contract with them so that they can go ahead and begin our audit for this fiscal year we just closed out. So I just need the council's approval.
Council, you've heard the request in regard to the engagement letter, the will of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Alexander.
Second.
Second by Councilman Spencer. Discussion. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Okay, that concludes our business for this evening. We'll move into communications. City administrator, your comments?
I would just like to thank the Tim's Ford Basketball for hosting the national boat races this weekend. They did excellent job.
Okay. Councilman Snee?
No report.
Did you have a good vacation?
Yes, sir.
I thought about you being in Texas. It was fun.
I would, if you'd never been to the Gulf Coast where Galveston is, I'd say go, because it's a lot of neat places, a lot of neat things to see.
Sure, sure. Councilwoman Alexander?
Just gotta get home to her grandson.
You wore out and didn't give out?
I'm on my usual.
Councilwoman Bates?
I also went by the boat races. It was real nice. Good event.
Councilman Spencer?
Not a note for him. Just traded home, so I'm glad.
Oh, I know we have one guest, well, we probably have more than one guest. But anyone in the audience, any guests that has any comments they'd like to make this evening? Okay, you'll come forward and state your name and...
I'm Jim Nunnling. I live at 103 Dogwood Lane. About three months ago, I brought concerns about a intersection, West Patty and Dogwood Lane. As of today, I haven't seen any work being done on it. To a lot of you, you may think it's immaterial, but I've been almost zipped, I don't know how many times, there. All it's gonna take is to put a stop sign there that says "two-way stop", and some lines to where West Patty's supposed to stop. Every car, and I'm not saying one or ten, it's every car that comes on West Patty, passes the stop sign, goes on up twenty, twenty-five feet, and stops. They have no concerns about the cars that are on Dogwood Lane. They think that's a straight line. I've been sitting there before, and there'd be three or four cars on West Patty, pull up, and they'll continue bumper to bumper, and I'm sitting there trying to get across. Now, you know, it may be nothing to anybody here, but I cross that line ten times a day. And each day, I sit there and wait if there's a car a half a mile up to pass, because I don't dare go out, because you'll hit me. They think they don't have to stop. And I've yelled at them, maybe I've shown them, but I've yelled at them, "There's a stop sign there." That's what I did. They couldn't care less. Is there any way we can get a stop sign put there, two ways, and get some lines across where they're supposed to stop?
I do know that I did speak with the local works director, Chief Young. You brought me a poster board, I believe, to your last one, and I gave him that. And I'm not so sure that Chief Young didn't go out there also. And they did agree for stop bars. I recognized you when you came in, and I tried to contact him to see if that had been done, and he said that it was on his list, but to be quite honest, that he had forgotten. So I will make sure that he comes and sees you.
I have pure appreciation. We need something there. Somebody's gonna get killed.
I agree.
Thank you for coming. Before we adjourn, if you'll indulge me just one second, I'm gonna ask Chief Young, I put him on the spot, to make a brief comment, if he doesn't mind, in regard to just activities that's been going on around the country in regard to the police department, and how that's affecting and impacting our officers in their, in their job. I think that we need to mention that.
You did come on the spot there.
Well, you've never been on loss for words.
You're always here.
I think everybody's seen the news here lately, and it's been a, we're living in kind of precarious time right now. I know law enforcement itself feels like we're under attack, which we are. We've had threats upon our own officers locally, but we're not alone. It's been going across nationwide. In the last weekend, since last Thursday, I think I could have wrapped it, been a lot, Miss Beth, about a lot. We get calls from TBI, FBI, on different things going on around the country. I know that Bristol, Tennessee, we had a mass shooting lip fire. I think one guy, there was like seven more, was attempted, got shot. Bristol, Tennessee. I know in St. Louis, we had an officer shot three times in the back. Just checking the driver's license or something. Paroled him. And another officer, home invasion, where the young man that he went to church with was African descent and was, got caught up in the Black Lives Matter movement and broke into her house trying to kill him and his family. And he had to kill an eighteen, nineteen-year-old kid that went to church with. It's been more across the country. I know the air state of Michigan. Of course, everybody knows about the Dallas massacre. There's a, it will be done here locally, locally. That's what I'm late for the council meeting. I've been sitting down listening to members of the community and talking to them, and some open dialogue, discussing things, trying to diffuse some things when we got out of control. But we are, we're living in a hard time right now. And I think everybody needs to kind of take a deep breath. And I think we need some leadership, to be quite honest, from the top, from top down. In this country right now, there's a lot of things that can be said publicly. People jump into conclusions. I just had this conversation with a parent a while ago. You see things on TV, you see things on Google, you all might be assuming the worst before the facts come out. And normally when the facts come out, you only recognize what you originally heard. And I think we had very positive people a while ago. We've had some issues come up locally, I'd say, where some threats were made. Some of those threats are still active. But we are trying to address those in a very diplomatic way, in a roundabout way, to, instead of increasing the flame, trying to throw some water on it a little bit, yeah, put the whole fire hat on again, and diffuse those situations before we get out of control. I ask everybody's prayers for our country, and for all lives, black lives, white lives, cops' lives, everybody's life. It's gotta, it's gotta just stop somewhere in this country. And I think we, in every community, we take a deep breath and try to reach out to each other and get some open dialogue and fix some situations or misunderstandings, or simply allow our judicial system to work. Instead of being vigilante and hitting our streets and becoming vigilante justice, it does not fix anything. There is a justice system in this country that's the greatest in the world. It's not perfect. Even though we got a lawyer in the room. I think you'll agree with me. It's not, it is the best system in the world that every American is considered innocent until proven guilty regardless of what circumstances are. I was quite taken aback by the chief in Dallas, Texas. I heard him speak yesterday. If you didn't get a chance to see his press conference yesterday, I encourage everybody to watch. He had brought me back to law, me and him, actually, I felt our careers kind of mirrored each other. We was born about the same time, went to, got in the law force at the same time, and for the same reasons. And I thought he has handled the situation as good as anybody possibly has handled the situation in Dallas. I think he's a true American. And it was senseless, laughing at us. It was absolutely senseless, and it was brought on by propaganda in the media, propaganda online, propaganda from radical groups. And I think we all need to thank for ourselves to listen to somebody else thinking for us. But we are taking precautions. See, locally, we are taking precautions. I'm allowed to talk to the mayor. We conversed multiple times, and the city minister, Fred Ruggen, and I have too. Officers are responding to calls right now, double, try to get two people to every cop. Everybody's on the edge. I mean, they are. But they're doing their job. They're doing their job. And I've had, nobody else... And I've had, don't be alienated whatsoever from officers, but they are, they're listening to what's going on around them. And the chief in Dallas said he hugs all his officers, so I've been trying to hug him as much as I can. But I think we need, we need to consider the jobs that these officers do every day and they put their lives on the line for all the citizens regardless of race, regardless of sexual orientation, religious beliefs, it doesn't matter. And if they willingly will die for our citizens, then no greater love than Bible for man lays life down for his neighbor to find a place to have. These officers live that every day and they believe that and my ass off to it and my time misses up.
And also, I was going to mention, we have seen cases, there have been cases where fire departments would even be called out and for the purpose of stop, stop breathing the fire. So it's a pretty broad spectrum. And I think that we need to, as we can, not only our officers and firemen that risk their lives for, for us and protecting us, to make it a point to say thank you to those individual firemen and police officers and not only in Winchester, but wherever you come across.
And they were, they died, I understand, you're right, and they're 100% saying, because you look at the situation in Dallas, those injured people, 12 of them, some of them dead, they, somebody had to rescue them. And there was paramedics, firefighters, EMS, people had to go under fire and do that. Same thing happened in Bristol here recently and they doubted the guy today. He lived, they shot him, but he did live. Director Mark Gwynne got reappointed today, or yesterday, our director of TBI is a great asset to our state and I'm very proud that he was reappointed, great American. And I know he talked to me Thursday night, he was calling me Thursday night. In the middle of August, Thursday, I read on my newsletter, we said we thought we had an input to the appeals, the county of the state of the appeals, but they reared their ugly head. After I sent that letter out to you, I get a call from TBI, I think it was 26 young people of Ghosts, I think three of them died in Berksburg. And to our agency's credit, TBI's first call to us to get for intel purposes because we tracked down the last batch of maniac with a connection to that. But they was able to, and I talked to the director Thursday night, and we have a whole lot of communication with him and that speaks highly for our agency. Our detectives were contacted to assist on that and I'm very proud of the fact that they would call us for help or something like that. And I think it speaks highly of the quality of people that we have working for our city.
But it's, it's become a time in our life when I think that it's important for us all to, to be careful and be aware of our environment.
Yes.
And if you see something that's, doesn't seem right, call somebody. Because you never know when that might change, save someone's life, so.
And also I think the local media too, because they've been great. And I thought I had, they, the, 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 the four individuals from out of state here trying to go, try to obtain a permit to go door to door, sell stuff and all for and have a very lengthy record, wasn't a sex offender and advised him to leave town. But he was out on radio, exactly, and kind of bothered our citizens to be on the lookout for. So our local media is very beneficial in my getting you two on it.
The word is out of my mouth.
But thank you again.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief Bruce, for your report. That concludes our meeting. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still move.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Spencer.
Second by Councilman Womack.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Stand and adjourn.